Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Mark Balthrop is the pastor at Redeemer Reform Church. He'll lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Let us pray. Our Father, we come before you this morning with grateful and humble hearts asking for your grace and for wisdom. I thank you for these council members and for our mayor. We pray that you would fill them with wisdom today, that they may work toward that which is good and true and beautiful. We pray that Oklahoma City, by your power, would be a shining light to all other cities, where justice is met with mercy. We pray that this is a place where virtue is also met with liberty. I pray, Lord, as the city goes forward today, that you would be glorified in all that is done here, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are a lot of positive stories going on in the world of education in Oklahoma City, and we are today going to highlight one of them. Tracy McDaniel is here with KIP. Tracy, would you come up and bring your former student along with you? This is no small honor. Tracy McDaniel is in charge of KIP Reach College Preparatory School, and he has been named, its school has been named, one of the top 50 middle schools in the United States. How about a round of applause? That is honor in itself, and we're glad to have that honor.
And I'm here with my, one of my students, Ashley Gordon. She was in the first class.
What year was that?
That was in 2002. And now we just hired her two weeks ago in her job as a KIP college counselor to help get these other kids down to and through college. So we made a commitment to her back in 2002, and so she's gone on to Deerfield Academy in Mount Holyoke, and now she's back here in town, and she's going to help us do the same thing with other kids. So we're honored to be here and happy to do what we're doing, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Let's show again our appreciation. A letter of congratulations.
Mayor, if I could, I always have to congratulate my fellow alum from Mount Holyoke. I'm so proud of her. She's did such an awesome job. I'm glad you're here today. It's nice to see you again, and welcome back to Oklahoma City.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, my niece went to KIP, and I just want to personally thank you, Mr. McDaniel, for everything that KIP has done in the community, and I'm proud to say, guess what? Ward 7. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. It is also a month, and we draw attention to strokes and prevention, and we have, let's see, Naomi, Gary, Stephen, A.J., and Jennifer. You all want to come on up? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas stroke is the leading cause of serious long-term disability and the fourth leading cause of death in the United States, killing about 130,000 people nationwide and 2,100 citizens of Oklahoma each year. Whereas stroke prevalence is projected to increase by 24.9% between 2010 and 2030, and the direct medical costs for treating stroke are expected to increase by 238% from $28.3 billion in 2010 to $95.6 billion by 2030. Whereas nearly 78 million Americans have high blood pressure, which is a major controllable risk factor for stroke, including 44% of African-American adults among the highest prevalence of any population in the world. Whereas more than half, 58%, of Americans don't know if they are at risk for stroke, and 1 in 3 Americans can't recall any stroke warning signs or symptoms. Whereas the fast warning signs and symptoms of stroke include face drooping, arm weakness, speech difficulty, and time to call 911. Additional stroke warning signs include sudden numbness or weakness of the face, arm, or leg, especially on one side of the body; sudden confusion, trouble speaking or understanding; sudden trouble seeing in one or both eyes; sudden trouble walking, dizziness, loss of balance or coordination; and sudden severe headache with no known cause. Whereas on the American Strokes Month Day of Action, May 1, 2014, and throughout the entire year, the American Stroke Association's Together to End Stroke Initiative encourages everyone to learn their personal stroke risk, memorize and share the stroke warning signs, and call 911 at the first sign of a stroke. Whereas new and effective treatments have been developed to treat and minimize the severity and damaging effect of strokes, but much more research is needed. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 2014 as American Stroke Month in Oklahoma City, and urges all the citizens to familiarize themselves with the risk factors associated with stroke, recognize the warning signs and symptoms, and on first sign of a stroke, dial 911 so that we might begin to reduce the devastating effects of stroke on our population.
Let's show our appreciation to these people who are drawing attention to this process. And some striking statistics here that I think are worth repeating. 130,000 people killed every year in the United States by stroke, 2,100 Oklahomans, and the projections aren't good. We're expecting a 25% increase over the next year. It's probably because we're an aging population. And Naomi, I know you have some success stories here.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Cornet, and the City Council for recognizing me as Stroke Month. There's been some great work done in the state of Oklahoma to reduce the amount of deaths because of stroke. It's now the fifth leading cause of deaths. Previously, it was the fourth leading cause of death in the state. So there's some great work that's being done. Also, Oklahoma City houses two nationally recognized comprehensive stroke centers. There's probably a handful in the nation, and the fact that there are two facilities in Oklahoma, it shows great strength in terms of the efforts to reduce stroke in our state. And I wanted to introduce some of our stroke survivors, have them briefly introduce themselves and talk about their experiences as a stroke survivor.
I'm Stephen Melch from Ward 2, and I had a major stroke in January of last year. Through some divine intervention, I was home alone, but I was able to start playing with the telephone because I had lost my sense of 911. And by luck, a stranger answered, and he was able to call 911 for me, and because I was using my home phone, they could locate me and get to my address in time. And through the miracle of medicine and timing, I was able to have this drug called TPA in my carotid artery. It was cleared, and within 12 hours, I had full recovery.
I'm Carol Sterling, and I'm on the Passion Committee, and I'm on Go Red for Women.
I'm A.J. Johnson. I am the unit director of the Boys and Girls Club, and I am a one-year survivor. It was one year ago on Saturday when I had my stroke. And, Mr. Mayor, I've included myself in your fight against obesity. I have lost 112 pounds in a year. So I'm very thankful to be here. Thank you.
I'm Gary Bulmer. I'm a hemorrhagic stroke survivor from 1976. Two brain surgeries to clip it out and remove it. Today, I'm involved in about four different support groups. For those of y'all that we may be seeing in support group, we hope not, we are actively committed to life after stroke.
And I'm Jennifer Seal with the American Heart Association as well, and we are just so grateful to have people who are willing to stand up for this cause so that we can spread the word, and that's what today's proclamation is all about. Please share this information with your friends and family.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. And we are also becoming a more fit community, and we have some people here today that are doing their best to help us get that way. It's some success in Techno Gym. You all want to come on up? Rick, bring your, bring your group up here. Let's see, we have Patrick Wellington, Rick Trussell, Alan Glass, Rick Mason, Dr. Brian Lampkin, Mike Dupuy, and Dr. Audra Fox. And we have a proclamation for Let's Move a Better World, and they competed against 175 fitness centers over 10 countries over a four-week period and won an award. So let's hear more about it in this proclamation.
Whereas Techno Gym's Let's Move for a Better World Global Challenge worked to raise awareness about childhood obesity and promote wellness in schools. Whereas the Let's Move for a Better World campaign was the result of the Techno Gym's 30-year commitment to improving wellness around the world. Whereas Oklahoma City's Key Health Institute entered the challenge, competing against 175 participating fitness centers in 10 countries over a four-week period, with the winning fitness center earning $30,000 worth of Techno Gym exercise equipment for a middle school of its choice. Whereas Key Health Center engaged individuals during the competition by launching dedicated 24-hour workout days involving local business through designated events, handing out promotional giveaways, and more. Whereas participants in the challenge ranged from current members of Key Health Center as well as the community at large, including children from Taft Middle School all the way to a 72-year-old who led the nation in moves of activity. Whereas Oklahoma City's Key Health Center, one of the newest and smallest clubs in the competition, finished first in the United States and second in the world behind a health facility in Italy. Whereas Key Health Institute will donate the Techno Gym Easy Line equipment to Taft Middle School. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim June 5, 2014, as Let's Move for a Better World Day in Oklahoma City.
And $30,000 worth of fitness equipment going to Taft Middle School. Thank you all very much. Patrick Wellington is here. You can, yeah, show your round of applause. Patrick is the fitness director.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet, and City of Oklahoma City. We want to thank everyone for all their efforts. I know the group of people up here did their part. To give you an idea, we did 4.8 million moves. And to put that in perspective, 500 moves is about 10,000 steps. So collectively, as a, as a fitness center, as a community, we had people come together overnight, different thunder watch parties, anything to get people engaged and join this effort to help Taft Middle School bring awareness to the childhood obesity problem that's, that we're all aware of. And in the end, that would equate to close to 100 million steps, if that makes sense for you guys, a better correlation of steps. But we want to thank everyone's effort, and we're having a big party celebration on June 4 at Key Health Institute, and we'd love all of you to be there, 11 to 1, and we'll get to dedicate the equipment to Taft Middle School on that day.
Congratulations, and we're very appreciative. Let's show our appreciation. As we call the meeting to order, we have item 4 on the agenda, the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for proceeding council meetings. All right. Comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now we have requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a few this morning, starting on page 20. Page 20, under item 6BU. There are some errors in the, in the agenda item in the encumbered certificate, and we'd ask that that be revised and brought back at another date. So we'll strike, ask that that be stricken. Again, that's 6BU. Moving to page 27. Item 8C, PC 10363. The applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until June 10. Again, that's item 8C. And then on page 30, under items 8A1, item H 216 North Tuttle, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item J 3124 Northwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to 8K1, item A 9525 Allen Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item B 6420 Ashby Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Item D 1800 North Bryant, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E 7901 North Council, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F 5005 Gaines Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G 1128 Glade Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H 3407 North Grove, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M 1112 North Ross, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 31, item R 1731, I'm sorry, 1739 Northeast 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S 3221 Northeast 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item W 5015 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AA 722 Northeast 34th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E 1000 Southwest 55th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And item GG 401 Northwest 90th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have a motion in a second. We have a presentation this morning?
Eric's just going to go over the quiet zone and, and talk a little bit about the schedule and, and again, the funding sources that were approved by previous council resolution.
Okay. Morning, Eric.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So MFA, item A this morning is the preliminary report for Project MC 422, the sealed railroad safety corridor, also known as the quiet zone. And so this isn't the first time that you've seen this, but this will actually be the first formal report or plan brought to you for consideration. So as a reminder of the quiet zone, we, we've been working for some time, an arrangement and agreement, to fund and also a schedule to move this forward. This is going to allow from northeast 16th Street to southeast 23rd Street to potentially create a quiet zone, whereas the trains will not have to blow their whistle through the downtown area. There's a number of items that are included in the report, and one that you will find most probably interesting is it will go intersection by intersection outlining the actual improvements that will be done. So to do the quiet zone, we have to protect those intersections, and they can be done in about three different ways. One is a closure. The second is to add some restrictive medians that will keep cars from actually driving in an S pattern around the two gates to actually get through if there were an oncoming train. And then the third option is actually to install quad gates, which is a pair of gates that come down that just physically will not allow a car or a vehicle to pass through. So each of those is outlined in this report. You'll see those included. The funding plan was previously approved by the City Council last summer, and so the work has been completed by Cardinal Engineering. We do have Steve Mason also in the audience today, the engineer that's doing that. The funding is broken up into several categories. It's a $3.9 million project that's going to be funded partially by Oklahoma City Economic Development TIF funds in the amount of $1.7 million. The MFA is funding the soft costs or the engineering portion at $185,000. There's general fund, that would be the Ward 6 fund balance that was proved also as a part of the funding plan last summer in the amount of a half a million, and then there's also an estimated half a million in private funds. There's two phases to the project, but it does total up to $3.9 million, and that's also included in the report. The schedule is upon your approval this morning. This report would then be complete. It will allow us to then move forward and work with the BNSF to finalize their plans. Now, BNSF actually would do the majority of the construction that's related to the track construction. The city's not authorized to do that work, so a part of the funding plan is to pay the BNSF to do work. Now, they have given the city a discounted rate, so they too are very interested in this quiet zone proposal. And so we're, we're seeing a, a very good cost of their typical construction, which is included. We expect we can finish the final plans later this year. We can then make those final applications to the Federal Rail Association, the FRA, and then we hope that we can actually construct and complete the project in 2015. So with that, again, the report is attached. It does include some of those basics, and if there's any individual questions on, say, an intersection, we can look at those as well.
Okay. Questions for Eric?
Yeah, just a quick question. Eric, when do you think the project will be completely finished?
By the end of 2015.
End of 2015. And that'll go from where to where?
Basically, from the northeast 16th to southeast 23rd.
Okay. But essentially, there's nothing north of 16th till you get to Willshire.
I guess it is Willshire.
So there's going to be a...
The quiet zone will be longer than...
It'll, in essence, be quite a bit longer than that, right?
Yeah.
And I think, Eric, if I could point out, I think the private money is about $640,000.
I think it continues to climb. I think what we presented in the funding last year was about 500, and I'm sure much more has been received.
Okay. All right. Eric, thanks. We have a motion in a second on the MFA. Any other comments or questions?
Your Honor, I have a quick question on item G.2. This is a workman's comp claim, and it says in the write-up, and I'm not sure this is remaining to the major issue or not, that's my question. The claimant also suffered a heart attack and psychological overplay. Does this particular item settle all those issues? Or is he, he's resigned now, the employee is resigned. Can he come back and, and claim some additional medical assistance because of his heart attack and psychological overplay?
I do not know that. Maybe Craig, oh, there's Greg Freeman.
Yes, this, this should address everything that's listed within the memo.
It should, but does it?
Yeah, yes, it does. I'm sorry. It addresses everything that's within the memo.
Okay, thank you very...
That's right. Yes. Any other comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have five items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Three items. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent document. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Mr. Mayor, 6BD.
All right. Anybody else? Ed?
BZ.
BZ. All right.
Your Honor, item 6AB2.
Okay. Your Honor, A, Alpha X-ray, and Alpha Montreal Point 2, and Alpha Hotel, and then S, stir.
All right. John, you want to get started with B and D?
All right, thank you, Ms...
Oh, yeah, Pat.
Like that, AC and AZ.
AC.
And AZ.
And AZ. Okay. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out, 6BD is a joint project between the City of Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County. As you recall, on last year, each council member had a million dollars to spend, and so I'm spending $800,000 of the 1 million to do 10-lane miles in the eastern part of Ward 7. This again, the location is northeast 50th Street from Post Road to West Minister, which equals 1 mile. Northeast 63rd Street from Post Road to Henley Road, 4 miles, which gives us a total of 10-lane miles. Again, this is a joint project with Oklahoma County. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, John. Ed, B2?
BZ.
BZ, yeah.
BZ. For many years, members of the Vietnamese community have worked to put a monument in, in Military Park, none more than Ben Nguyen, who's here in the audience. Some may have been here. A number of years ago, there, there was a, an attempt that, that didn't work out. There were some things in that that aren't included in this, like renaming a street and things like that. But a proposal was submitted about nine months ago. We've had several meetings over the last year with Wendell and other members of city staff. The, the idea is that members of the Vietnamese community would raise roughly $250,000 for a monument commemorating the effort in the Vietnam War and also a symbol of the commitment to the city. There's a flag, multiple flag as part of the monument. The, this would be incorporated into the master plan as part of the GEO bond, the 2007 GEO bond. There's money for reconstruction of Military Park. It says $650,000. I thought it was $800,000. We'll have to clarify that. But the idea would be to incorporate the monument into the revamping of Military Park. This was brought to the Parks Commission in October and passed. It was brought to the Arts Commission and passed in December. The City's Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs would administer the art selection process, put together a stakeholder group. There is a design, several of you have seen it, but there's a design in mind for the monument. But again, the City's Office for Arts and Cultural Affairs would administer the process. What they need this resolution today to then take to donors to begin to raise money. And then we would, we would try and work over the next year in a way to incorporate the design of the monument once that process has been completed and incorporated into the master plan at the same time, so we're not raising money for monument, putting the monument in, and then trying to do the reconstruction afterwards. So this resolution is, is a statement in principle that we would accept this $250,000 donated monument.
Great. Great project. Mr. Nguyen, thank you for coming today. David, AB2? Or is that ABZ? I can't read my handwriting today. My 2s are looking like Zs.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just wanted to thank City Manager Couch and the staff for putting together a bid that will be sent to the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, to hopefully obtain a 4 to 1 match that will allow us to make pedestrian improvements along I-240. And if we are successful in transforming this back from a, an automobile-based retail area to a pedestrian-based retail area, or a more pedestrian-friendly area, I think this will be a tremendous accomplishment. It reminds me of some of the great stories that came out of OU's placemaking conference now almost two years ago. An area that was created during the early '60s, designed for automobile to conduct retail sales, is now being transformed to make it a more pedestrian-friendly area. I am very supportive of this effort, and again, thanks to the staff for putting together the proposal.
All right. Thanks, David. Pat, AX?
AX is a project in Ward 8, and it has to do with about a half-mile road construction. And the thing that got my attention on this was the number of amendments and change orders on this particular project that increased the price of, of the total project, 14.83% above the, the initial bid. And there was one in here that was even worse than that. I think it was up 35%, but it wasn't Ward 8, so I didn't get involved in it. Do we have, and should we have, some kind of a limit? I guess, do we have, or should we have, some kind of a limit that we can do under this kind of process? It seems like that there's at some point in time, we ought to be able to stop these and look at them and see if there's something that we've missed, or something that was included that shouldn't have been included, or if it is included, we need to justify it rather than just do this change order project, process. rather than just do this change order project process.
Doesn't the system itself kind of lend itself to that, though? Because we bring them back. I agree with you, there ought to be some limit, but once you make, once you're under, and you need to finish the project, I think the system we have now, where it's brought back to us like right now, works pretty well.
So I think, just as a comment from the Public Works Department, one of the things that we struggled with is we had limited the use of change orders and amendments periodically. And what we found was that contractors weren't being paid timely. If we waited a month or two and assembled a change order, we also found that there was just a lack of information when it was time to prepare that document. So to answer why there are so many on a project, we're actually proposing that during construction, we may do as many as one a month, just to take care of quantities. Now, sometimes that may increase the quantity or decrease, and I think you'll see on your agenda, there's some decreases sometimes as well. I think as for the percentage, and I need to look at this one more specifically, but sometimes what we find is there's just additional work that we find that could be done under this contract, and out of convenience, we add it. We could bid it as a separate project, but in some cases, that could delay some work. But I can follow up a little bit more on this one and find out specifically why it was 14%.
Well, and I think one of the other things that's out there is although there's a lot of change orders, we're doing a lot of projects, and, you know, a million, $2 million projects is fairly routine for us, but that's a big deal to a contractor. And, you know, whatever the change order amount is, is something that they want, and they want us to respond to their change orders. They want to know that it's going to happen, and that they get paid for the work that they've been done, that's been done.
Well, as long as there's a consistent and impartially review process in place, then maybe my concern has been answered. But I wanted to make sure that we were looking at these to make, you know, to see if there was some point in time at which we just need to step back and say, okay, we need to redesign this, or rethink our...
Eric, what are the, give us two or three common reasons a change order would take place to begin with, because we have a plan when we start, and then there's a change. So what are the commonalities and why change takes place?
You know, I think sometimes we just have just an error in the plans where a quantity was estimated at, say, 10,000 units, and it ends up being 15,000 units. It's just an oversight early in the process, and we find out during construction, we needed just a little bit more. That's probably the most common, and that's what you'll see is when we adjust pay quantities. Those are actually amendments to the contract and not change orders. What makes those a little easier to palate is the fact that they were competitively bid and not negotiated prices. So they were bid against other contractors for that price. We're just buying more of it or less of it.
An example, on the Master Kids Project, we've had a lot of change orders that were owner-requested items, the school district requested, of things when we bid the project out, we didn't know whether we were going to fund it or not, because we didn't know if we'd have enough money. So we bid them out as alternates, and we didn't award all the alternates. We get to the end of the project, and there's, we haven't used many change orders, so we go ahead and add some of those alternates back in, maybe up to our change order limit, because it was all good stuff that brought value to the school, but at the time of the award, we didn't want to, we didn't want to extend ourselves too far out into the budget and leave not enough...
Well, you don't want to overpromise.
Exactly.
Well, Jim, you used the phrase "up to our change order limit." Is there a limit?
Yes, 10%.
10% under change orders?
Yes, sir. Not on amendments. Amendments, you can go beyond that, but for change orders, it's 10%.
But my concern, I guess, basically, when you get to cut all the shaft away from what I'm saying, is that are we accepting low bids and then having it made up in the...
Yeah. An example of where we set back and rebid a project, there's been a couple of those. One, and the schools are, I think, better examples of that, because they've just been not cookie cutter. I mean, when it's street projects, it's pretty much unit prices and such. Water projects are pretty much unit prices. But Emerson, we cut back part of that project and stopped it and did a second bid package on that. We did the same thing with Classon SAS, where we were too far into it, and there's parts of it, and we just cut off the scope of work because of the phasing and whatever had to be done, and we cut it off and rebid it at a later date. Those are two examples where we have done that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah. Pat, you also want to talk about...
I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
So, this isn't a case where the contractor who wins the bid is underbidding and then coming back and asking for more money? I think that's kind of at the heart of this issue, and I didn't really hear that answered.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, and so, on our typical contracts, I mean, it is a hard bid on a set fixed quantity. I mean, there isn't room for the contractor to really err on these unit price contracts, so the answer is no.
And so, even if, say, the contractor who had the highest bid, the highest amount bid, they would probably, they would more than likely come back with these exact same change orders and amendments if they had been awarded, and not the lowest bid.
Right. In the cases of these, with these amendments, that would exactly be the case, is either we increased or we decreased a bid quantity. The change orders are negotiated, and much like what Jim mentioned, we sometimes do add extra work through negotiation that wasn't a bid item, but those are far less than the total 14%. The 14 that's on this is all change orders and all amendments that are on this particular project.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Pat, you had some others listed, I believe.
A, H, this has to do with some traffic signal improvements in the downtown area, and I was curious if we had rethought our practice on walk signs, since we are trying to narrow these streets and slow the traffic down. And we have walk signs now that I think are a false insecurity to the pedestrian sometimes, because there's turning traffic that puts the pedestrian at risk as he steps out there with a walk sign. And in some cities I've been visited, why the walk signs stopped all the traffic while the pedestrians go across.
Great question about that. We've looked at those options down there. We've not gone into the all-stop pedestrians-cross it, which is done from time to time. You know, there are, you know, especially with Project 180, with the signals that are going in down there, there's clearly pedestrian lights that go in. If you've got a protected left-turn lane, then the pedestrians aren't supposed to go, and you don't have the clearance to do that. If it's not protected, you know, the vehicles are supposed to yield on that, and the pedestrian does have the right-of-way. And so, we're following the manual, uniform, controlled devices as...
I'm sure there's something we're following, but it seems to me that we are providing a sort of a false sense of security sometimes when we have a walk sign.
Well, Pat, are you talking about on-left turns and protected...
I'm talking about all the, the entire system we have is, to me, flawed in that we allow some traffic to go through that intersection at the same time we have a walk sign. And I just think that's misleading to the pedestrian. That's just, maybe I'm simple-minded.
I mean, we don't have people crossing, we don't have cars crossing an intersection when there's a walk sign up.
We have cars turning and...
Okay, on-protected left turns and non-protected left turns, yeah.
Or even making right turns.
Or turning right, which is, you know, that's tough to stop people sometimes. I, yeah, I agree with that.
Well, anyway, I just, and I think further on this, we've got some walk signs in our suburban areas that make no sense at all, because there are no sidewalks leading up to the walk signs. And we have walk and don't-walk signs flashing back and forth, and there's no sidewalks. There's no way the pedestrian can get to the intersection.
I'd be happy to look at any specifics you've got on that.
Heffner Road and MacArthur.
Okay, great.
Item AM two is a contract we're awarding to a company to clean out some channels, drainage channels. And here we say clean, channel cleaning and maintenance. What kind of maintenance do we do, and we, is required in that contract?
Thank you, Councilman. We have multiple channel cleaning contracts, and monthly, the contractor goes out and visits the locations that they're under contract to do. If they notice grass any taller than 18 inches, they've got to remove that grass and cut it down lower. If they find any debris in the channel or limbs that are hanging, they have to remove those as well. So they basically do maintenance and cleaning of the channels that are under those particular contracts.
But do they, if, for instance, if the channel has been, has failed due to bad construction or some other reason, are they responsible for repairing the channel?
So they wouldn't do any capital improvement work, no. So if we find that there's a crack in a concrete channel liner or a failed erosion control thing, that would be something they'd bring to our attention, and then we could plan a project accordingly. But no, they don't repair those.
And we don't have any drainage money, so we just plan these projects and add them to the list?
We do struggle with funding for some of our future drainage projects. We obviously are keeping a list of priority projects, so that when resources are available, we can address those as quick as we can.
Thank you. And item S, I was just curious, we're declaring 100 gallons of paint surplus, and we're donating it to the Neighborhood Alliance Paint Houses with... First, two questions, really. Where did we get the 100 gallons of paint that was surplus? Why did we buy it in the first place? Secondly, is it legal for us to donate it to anybody? Can we make donations?
So if I might respond, the paint was actually deposited at our household hazardous waste facility as a household hazardous waste. And I think, as we presented with our budget presentation, if you donate an item at the Oklahoma City facility, we actually have a small store there that if you donate, you can take items for free. Pesticides, paint, other products. In this case, we just simply have a surplus of paint that we would normally get rid of through our, through our normal process, and we have the ability...
Which would be a contract, where we'd pay people to take it away from us.
And in this case, we have 100-gallon requests for home remodel, and we did this last year with great success, and so we're basically returning that to you for your consideration today.
Do we monitor the colors of that donated paint, so we don't get odd-colored houses in there? That's okay. Forget it.
No.
Forget the question.
Pete, I think you're next.
AC is a resolution authorizing the, a national register nomination for a building called the Kelly Club on North Kelly. I just wanted to just bring that to the attention of everyone, that building has saved as many lives as some hospitals, and it's a wonderful organization. It's been an AA club headquarters for years and years and years, and I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that it's going to get some recognition for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask, but would it be all right if I talked about A, D, and E?
Sure.
Briefly. A, D, to follow on Pete's comments, is a nomination request for the Fred Jones Manufacturing Plant at 900 West Main Street. And that also will hopefully place that on the National Register of Historic Places. And then, item A, E is another project in Ward Six, and it's a resolution approving an allocation of our Home Program funds for the construction of 200 units of single-room occupancy housing on the corner of the West Town Campus over at Fifth and Virginia. And this is really an integral part of our 100,000 Homes project with the Homeless Alliance to provide safe and secure housing for really, truly, the most difficult folks on the streets to house. And so, this is a terrific kind of conclusion to that piece of the campus. So, thank you.
Any other comments on the consent docket? Okay.
And is the bridge we're talking about, is it the small bridge on Douglas? Or is it the, is it the larger bridge east, west of there on 149?
So this is work that's complete. So this bridge has been rehabilitated under a unit price contract, and the reason for the partial acceptance is that we anticipate additional bridges to also be performed. But this one's complete, which is why it's here today.
No, what I'm asking is, where is it?
It's right, I personally have not seen it, but the memo's listing it at southeast 149th and Douglas, so it's probably, it could be just a series of boxes and not look exactly like a bridge, but it would probably have a channel crossing right at that location.
But there's a bridge immediately south of 149th Street that is one of those old-fashioned county bridges that, when you couldn't go straight across on the section line, it jogs. It's a, it goes at an angle to the road. There was a death there about a year ago, and the bridge was pretty well torn up, but, and it needed to be rebuilt, because people that live south of there need access back into that area, since Douglas is close to the north. I think we're talking about that. That needs to be put on the project, though, to change that situation. I mean, that's a, you cannot fix a bridge like that for it not to be very, very dangerous. It's just not, it won't, you know, you have to curve. You have to, it's a one-lane bridge that you have to actually make a jog to the right or to the left, depending on which direction you're coming from, and it's dangerous.
I'll be happy to put it on a list for future consideration.
And I appreciate the fact that it was rehabilitated, you know, but it, we're rebuilding something that really needs to be replaced. And it would be very expensive to do. It's a wide chasm there where the creek runs underneath it, but it's dangerous. It is very dangerous.
You know, we're anticipating a bond issue in the next several years, and I think with that, we can add a project like this to that list for consideration.
Now, the other consideration is we're buying land now on 164th, a mile south of there today, to build a fire station, and the access for the fire station to the north will have to go a mile to, will have to go west rather than east, because that bridge is too dangerous to take a fire truck across it, my, a big, a big, large truck. So, anyway, it ought to just be, you ought to look at it, because it's a very dangerous intersection.
Thank you.
A bridge, I mean. Thank you.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket, 25 items today. Any comments or questions here?
Yeah.
All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Let's move this to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is at 8A1. It's in Ward Two at 615 West Wilshire. And Ed, we have one person who has signed up to speak.
Who's the, is that the...
They're in support.
Okay. I guess we can hear them first.
All right. Jeff Swanson?
Hello, my name is Jeff Swanson. I live at 1607 Dorchester Drive here in Oklahoma City. Just tell you very, very briefly about Wilshire Gun. Contrary to a couple of reports, we are not seeking to open a bar at all. In fact, we will not have any bar on the premises at Wilshire Gun. What we are is a $6 million facility here in Oklahoma City, opening a state-of-the-art indoor gun range, in fact, entire event center, that has the state's only 100-yard indoor lanes, 35-yard lanes, 25-yard lanes. We have archery. We have classrooms for myriad curriculum that standardizes the safety, that's paramount and fundamental to Wilshire Gun. We have corporate event center, a private club, and we also have the Range Cafe. Within the Range Cafe, we have asked for an ABC two overlay, and it's very, very important to note that at Wilshire Gun, you will never be allowed to have a drink first and then go shoot, just the opposite. What we encourage is for you to come to Wilshire Gun, come to any of the ranges, you check in with the range safety officer who greets you at the door. If you so want to shoot, then you go to the range desk and check in at that point. Once you've checked in, your driver's license is scanned. With all 50 states, you know you can scan the back of a driver's license. Take that in with you, and if your lane's not immediately up, you can go over to the Range Cafe and get a bite to eat. You will, of course, be advised that if you decide to order a drink, your driver's license is scanned again by our state-of-the-art scanning facility and point-of-sale system. You are then red-flagged and not allowed within any of the shooting facilities for the remainder of the day, either as a shooter or as a spectator. We have an absolute zero tolerance for any drinking before you've been shooting whatsoever. It's a state-of-the-art facility. We feel strongly that what we're doing and bringing to Oklahoma City is something that is not only local and regional, but brings national attention with the competitive shooting on a national level that's coming in, but also for the corporate events that we've done. And it is those corporate events in particular that is very, very helpful to be able to have this ABC two overlay, to attract the type of local and regional and even national events and corporate members that we want to bring here to Oklahoma City. But beyond just the scanning system, please understand that all of our employees are trained to standardized field sobriety testing measures. Not only that, but we also have a psych nurse on consult, so that all of our staff knows to watch for any type of a red flag whatsoever, not simply the scanning of a driver's license, but anything, any signs of stress or anxiety, depression, anything that would create a concern. And a range safety officer immediately take you, question you, move you to the side, or management will decide whether or not you are fit to be a shooter at all. But you'll never be able to drink and then go to the ranges in any way, shape, or form. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, but please understand that the majority of our staff are either current or former military or law enforcement personnel. They're very, very aware of everything involved in this. We have a $6 million investment, and we're not allowed, we're not about to allow anything to go wrong here and jeopardize that investment. We've come to you with approval, but after this, we still have to go to the ABLE Commission and other regulatory actions to ensure that what we're doing is as safe as any other restaurant, where you can currently open and carry a firearm right now and have a drink. But with what we've included, we're safer than any other restaurant that we can imagine anywhere in the country. anywhere in the country.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any questions from council or?
Oh, yeah. Ed, I have a comment. We have, alcohol is legal in Oklahoma, guns are legal in Oklahoma. I have a real problem with mixing them too. And so as a result, respectfully, I'm going to have to vote no.
Yeah, David?
The safety measures that were identified, I think, go well beyond what we find in other shooting facilities. You know, unfortunately, there's been instances where people have gone into facilities excluding alcohol and have been able to obtain a firearm and then went on a shooting spree. I think their safety measures go beyond and make this safer than what you find in other shooting facilities, both here locally and throughout the country. So with the efforts that they've identified, that they'll have in place, I don't see an opportunity to mix alcohol and the firearm shooting. I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned, in general, with these type of gun ranges to where people can access them. And there's no super, or there's very little supervision. People aren't available to monitor who they're checking guns out to other than, say, a clerk like you find in other types of retail facilities. Those gun ranges, I think, are more susceptible to having problems than this one. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Is the whole thing a private membership organization or is the club private?
No, we are open to the public. And the Range Cafe is open to the public as well. We're trying to extend the western corridor just a little bit to the north and they're in Ward 2 and actually bordering on Ward 7. We do have a private club level to it, but no, the Range Cafe is open to the public. You bet. And one important thing to note, in case you're not aware, there are ranges like this all over the country right now. The reason that you may not be aware of gun ranges that do currently sell alcohol, beer after you've shot or otherwise, is that we've not been able to find any incident of anything involving these two mixing ever in the history of our country. This dates back to late 1800s. In New York has one, California has one, Arizona, Texas, Kentucky, Georgia, the states are on and on. But those that do it, do it right. And we think we've taken the best of all of those ranges and have even added our own spin on it to take it to a much higher level. This is through local and national consultants that have helped us put together what we feel is the safest policy imaginable.
Yeah, John?
Mr. Mayor, I'm all for gun rights, but I think this is the wrong location, given the location of the facility in the neighborhood. That's the North Highlands area. So to mix alcohol and guns together in that neighborhood, I just totally disagree with.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. Can you kind of describe some of the physical barriers, if there are any, between the cafe and the range area?
There are, absolutely. In fact, when you come in, the cafe itself is directly to your right. And that's where you come in, you see menu boards. Then you actually go around a corner behind yet, you've already been greeted by a range safety officer. And then you would go actually to the point-of-sale within the cafe area, separated by railings, staircase, other walls and the like, just for the small cafe area. As you can tell, the cafe itself is less than 8% of the total 40,000 square footage of Wilshire Gun. But you're kept within that area, and you're not allowed beyond the area of where we've asked for an ABC-2 overlay to have a drink at all. And again, once you've had a drink, you're red-flagged, locked out of the system completely for the remainder of the day. Even our lead abatement, everything associated with this is complete state-of-the-art. It's an expensive facility to do it right, to do it to this standard of safety for lead abatement, the range safety officers, all the personnel, the training completely. But we can't imagine in any way that there'll be anything other than a strict zero tolerance policy and that the two will never mix here.
But also, I mean, you said the zero tolerance thing quite a bit. Why, because adding the ABC element to it seems to make the zero tolerance even harder. Like, what is the motivation? Like, why would you want to make that harder?
Well, what we've built, and this investment is not without recognition, that we hope to and has already been proving to with some of our bookings, to bring in national events of a corporate nature, of a competitive shooting sports nature and otherwise. And we strongly feel that having an ABC-2 overlay allows us then, in these safe confined areas, to host the corporate events like you would expect from Chesapeake or AEP or Devon, Cowboy Hall of Fame, others who have been contacting us, wanting to have local events at our place as well as bringing in national events and host them there. As events you've probably gone to before, having an area that is able to serve socially responsible limited drinking is inclusive in trying to get that done.
So you think that getting those sorts of events kind of hinges on serving alcohol?
Yes, yes. In fact, we've been told that by events, and we get calls all the day as we get closer and closer to opening.
I find that hard to believe, but I can accept it.
All right, are we ready to go?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, this past planning commission, it's, I toured it yesterday. It is a state-of-the-art facility. I understand the apprehensions. I'm not sure on what legal ground the city could deny this application. We do live in a state where guns and alcohol are mixed. I walk through H and 8, and people have open carry, and there's beer everywhere. You can, as he mentioned, open carry in any restaurant with beer. You know, something that's perhaps much more dangerous and causes much more harm to society than guns and alcohol is alcohol and driving. And without having any public transit in the evenings, I think we all know that we have bars throughout the city, throughout our neighborhoods. Where drinking and driving, people drink alcohol and they get behind a 1, 2, 3, 4-ton vehicle, that is a weapon of sorts. And so I think that other bars perhaps would learn from some of the security measures that are being instituted. I do believe it is much less likely to have drinking and driving from somebody leaving this facility. And so I'm not sure on what legal ground, and Kenny's not here, that you could deny this application with everything that's in place. And so I'm going to move for approval.
You have a second? Cast your votes. The motion carries 6-3.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're on item 8A2. It's a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1221 Southeast 30th Street, a few other places too. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an I-2 moderate industrial district. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any protests? No protests. I see the applicant is president. I see her attorney is here. Typically, the applicant always wants me to vote no on different things. So it's good to see that you here wanted me to support something. So I do move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A2? Cast your votes. It passes. John?
Oh.
Unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 13121 Northwestern. It's currently R1 single-family residential in some limited and general and community commercial districts, and it would become a new plan unit development. Pat?
Your Honor, thank you, and if I support this, I will vote for it. This is an area that's been under development for several years. Several developers have come in and tried to do it. It's a big area. There are some problems out there, but I think the current development team, I see the representative was here just a minute ago. And I think it's a good addition to that part of the city. There's already some construction out in that area, and I think it's going to be a good development. Like I said, it's been under consideration for several years. It's taken on different characteristics as it's going forward. I think what's worked out now is a good one. And Bob, I understand there were some TEs, and they've agreed to all of them?
That's correct. There was one on the front page or memo that was deleted, but other than that, they agreed to everything.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Kelly Work has signed up to speak. Kelly, you okay? You want to go ahead and vote?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead.
I actually do have one question, and it's not, it's, in the PUD, it talked about garden-style apartments are prohibited, and then it gave the description of what garden-style apartments are. And to me, that's just apartments. So I was trying to figure out what exactly apartments are going to go there. And it's just mainly from my knowledge. What are non-garden-style apartments?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kelly Work, and I'm here representing the applicant for this PUD. That was an issue that was presented by the members of the planning commission. The concern was that there was quite a lot of residential that is being allowed under the terms of this PUD, along with retail, office, restaurant, and entertainment venues. And the objective is for it to be a true mixed-use urban-style community. The concern was that, and there is a cap on the number, the total number of residential units that will be allowed under the terms of the PUD of 1,200 units. There was a concern that, well, if we were to allow the PUD to be approved, then the possibility would exist, if this development did not succeed, that then all of that residential would be in place, and we might just see a, an influx and development of just strictly the residential apartments, multifamily apartments. That would be the, what in the industry is referred to as the garden-style apartments, where it's a three- or four-story walk-up with, surrounded by parking and all of the entries from, to the individual units or exterior. And the objective of the commission, the concern of the commission and staff, was that we wanted to have some protection to prevent that from happening. So the way that we have done that in, under the terms of this PUD, is that we have included language that says that the residential has to go hand-in-hand with the office and the commercial. So we will be allowed to have one residential for each 500 square feet of commercial that is developed, one residential unit for each 250 square feet of office or medical use that is established. And then we also put in a, a language that would exclude, and this was difficult to arrive at this definition, because it's kind of one of those, you know it when you see it, but it's difficult to try to put it down on paper. We did include some language to attempt to exclude the garden-style apartments. And the objective is there, that we would have multifamily residential that would be more like what we see downtown, where it's, it's close to the street. The, it may still be three- or four-story, but typically, it would be dense, it would be, access to the units above the first floor would be through interior hallways rather than exterior units. So it'd have more of an urban feel. The objective is for this development to be pedestrian-friendly and walkable, so there'll be a lot of common areas. It'll be, they'll be hopefully close together so that, to encourage walkability. So that was the objective, was that we wanted to, we were allowing for the multifamily residential, but we wanted to try to ensure that it would be more of an urban style like you're seeing east of Bricktown, rather than more spread-out garden-style apartment. So that was our objective, and that's, we think we met that objective, but that's where we were trying to get to.
Yeah, no, it seemed like it was good wording. I just didn't know what non-garden-style apartments were. And urban feel at 164th and Western, that's going to be a, I'm ready to see that.
Well, it's across the street from Quail Springs Mall, so it'll...
Well, the objective is for this really to be its own zip code and for people to have an opportunity to live and work and play in this area. And it extends from, all the way from Western over to Pennsylvania. And it includes, this PUD includes permission for the participant recreation use that will be Topgolf. And so they're eager and ready to get underway. It will be located along the southern end, along, fronting on Western. And that is going to be a very exciting attraction for Oklahoma City, and they're anticipating that they will be under construction very shortly and that they plan to be open by the spring of 2015. So that's a part of what is included in this PUD. I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
This is a proposed site for the Cabela's as well, or?
The only occupant that has been publicly announced at this point is the Topgolf. And they're in conversations with a number of national retailers, but the only one that there's been a public announcement of at this time is Topgolf.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask for the emergency on this project.
Okay. Voting on the emergency passes 9-0.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item 8A4 is a planning case in Ward 8 at 14700 Hertz Quail Springs Parkway. It's currently a plan unit development and would become a new PUD if passed. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project in an area that's already been heavily developed, this office space already, so this will be consistent with what's going on up there in the existing buildings right now. I would move approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 8A4? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1803 East Britton Road. It's currently R1 single-family and would become a new plan unit development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anybody signed up?
No one has signed up.
This application is for Kim Ray. I am in 110% behind this development, and Kim Ray could have chosen to put their development in any part of the city, but they decided to remain in Ward 7. Kim Ray hires a lot of people within Ward 7. I had the opportunity to attend a community meeting several months ago, and saw Kim Ray actively engaged the residents for this facility. As you see with the information that has been provided, the majority of actually the protesters who submitted letters have basically withdrawn their proposal, excuse me, they basically have withdrawn their protest. And Mr. Hill has been working with the protesters to address all of their concerns. With that said, I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 3801 Northwest 164th Street. It's currently a plan unit development and would become a new PUD if passed.
And I think I saw Tim Johnson is the representative, the owner. If there are any questions, we can ask him to go and answer those questions. If not, I would move approval. This is sort of an interesting development. It's in an area that is adjacent to, close to an OGD substation, and it's an area that's been slowly developed. They've been tried some things out there before, and it hasn't gone over too big. But this is, I think, maybe, excuse me, in addition to out there, that will capture the essence of what's required in that area. I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item 8A6. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item 8A7 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 11400 North Kelly. It's currently a plan unit development and would become a new simplified plan unit development if approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have anyone who signed up? Is the applicant present? Can you please explain this course?
Good morning, Barry Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, representing the applicant. This SPUD is essentially, it's a let's-play indoor soccer facility that currently the zoning is under a PUD. It's... It's a O2 zoning and the, the S-PUD restricts the use to this one use. So it's the, the participant recreation, I believe is the way the, the zoning is, is described, but it would limit it to this one specific use.
All right, thank you. I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item 8A7. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A8 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 3221 Southeastern Avenue. It's currently R1, single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present? Um, do we have anybody who's signed up? All right, I move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8A9 is also in Ward Seven at 3301 Southeastern Avenue, and it's currently R1, single-family, and will become a new simplified planned unit development.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up? Nope. All right, I move for approval.
Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item 8B is a zoning case in Ward Seven. The address is 13501 North Bryant, and it's currently double-A, and it would become a new planned unit development. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. And I, first of all, I want to thank the, the homeowners association, along with the developer and also Oklahoma Christian. A few weeks ago, we was able to have a meeting where the resident was able to work out their differences with the developer and also Oklahoma Christian. And thank you, Oklahoma Christian, for doing the right thing. So I do move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on item 8B? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And also, Mr. Mayor, I asked for the emergency.
All right. Cast your votes on the emergency and it passes eight-zero.
All right, thank you.
Item 8C was deferred earlier. Is that June 10th? Is that the new date?
Yes.
Okay. Item 8C has been deferred until June 10th. Item 8D is a public hearing. This is, this has to do with the Capitol Hill Business Improvement District. And item 8D2 would be to adopt and confirm the assessment role. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item as part of the public hearing on item 8D? All right, how about a motion then? It's in Ward Four. Pete?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8D2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 8E is a companion item. This is just the actual ordinance for it. Pete, you want to make a motion there? Cast your votes there and it passed unanimously. And the, the emergency is appropriate, I think, on this. Pete, you want to make a motion there? Because Francis says so.
It's, it starts the payment period on a specific date.
The clause is for a reason. It is not a gift that you give every applicant that comes forward. It's, there's a reason for the emergency clause. It defers the implementation of the, of the action to give the public, if they felt aggrieved, an opportunity to do something about it. We just give the emergency for everybody that's late, and I just want to be sure that's not why we're doing it here.
Sounds like it's not.
Okay, I move the emergency.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding some reserved parking, and this was introduced to council a couple of weeks ago. The public hearing is today. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under the public hearing item on 8F? All right, how about a motion then from council to move it forward? Cast your votes and it moves forward. And same thing on item 8G. This is a public hearing regarding an item that was introduced to council two weeks ago. This has to do with the design district. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under the public hearing aspect? All right, how about a motion from council then to move it on? Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. And item 8H is a public hearing for an item that was introduced a couple of weeks ago. It's kind of some housekeeping on our HP ordinances. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under this item?
Quick one.
Okay, cast your votes on item 8H. I guess we need to vote 8H1 first? Looks like it. Okay, I'll take that motion then for item 8H1. Cast your votes on that. Passed unanimously. How about a motion now on item 8H2? Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item 8I is a new resolution today. It's going to be introduced to us, and I think Craig Freeman's here. Craig?
Thank you. This ordinance actually provides for the city treasurer to create $500 petty cash accounts as departments needs, need those. If it's going to be over $500, then it, and we need that on an ongoing basis, then we have to create that within the ordinance. This provides for a $2,000 petty cash account for code enforcement and development services. It helps them when they get ready to get, it's a real cumbersome process right now to get their filing fees with the county, and the county doesn't accept our purchasing card. And so this will allow them more flexibility in getting, in getting their filing fees. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Motion and a second. We'll be having a public hearing on this item June 10th, and then it's scheduled for final adoption by council on June 17th. We have a motion and a second today of this item introduced, item 8I. Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8J? Yes, sir, come on forward. Now, you can come on forward. Yeah. Just step up to the center microphone here if you would. Good morning. I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Erwin Johnson, and I'm here to speak for my brother Floyd Johnson, the property owner, and his son Eric Johnson.
Okay. Which property are you concerned with?
P, address 11620 Northeast 41st Spencer, Oklahoma.
Way out east on 41st Street?
Yes.
All right.
Ward Seven. And, um, my brother's the property owner, but, um, and I doubt if he'll, he lives in Biggs, Oklahoma, and I doubt if he returned, but his, his children was raised there till their mother passed. And he's, the son, Eric Johnson, was wanting to put the house up, not just because this deal, he had took action in April to, to move back. He have acquired a job where he's supposed to start working here for graphic printing in June, but he's a cross-country truck driver and he haven't been able to, uh, prop his truck off at a security, uh...
Okay.
...location. And a company he hauled for, also hauled for the company he's going to work for, and he said he figured he was going to have a problem because then said if you can't report June the first, let them know. And he would like to get extensions so he can at least come and live, I mean, check it out. And he, but he was, his plans was to restore the house. And the house can be...
Have you looked at it very well? Have you looked at it closely?
Yes, I looked at it and he, he wanted me to come up with some, uh, of what it would cost to restore it. And I, I seen the holes in the roof and, and those holes in the roof is, cost about 22 years ago, my brother was replacing the roof when his wife died and he just stopped working and he...
Yeah, I mean, it looks really bad.
And he moved, moved away.
I think we're...
Yes, and he want the stints so he can come and look at it. He lived in, in Tulsa, the son, but he's a truck, a cross-country truck driver, and he just been too busy for the last eight years to even, when he, his days off, you know, he was just resting. And he was just like an extension so he could look at it and decide what he would like to do with it. Right now, he's in Alabama. I talked to him yesterday. And he's, uh, he was supposed to be through working for Total Transportation last weekend, but they...
I mean, our problem is that, that it's, it's a nuisance for the neighbors that live around it. It's not that we want to try to be, you know, not sensitive to his personal issues and his work situation. John, it's in Ward Seven.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like this item left on the, on the docket, and if you can just work with staff, staff is going to work with you all, but we need to definitely leave this on.
Okay, so the, I mean, the clock's ticking on this property. You or somebody needs to start working with staff about what you're going to do about it.
Okay.
It looks really bad. I don't, I don't, I don't see a, a way that he's going to be moving into this place anytime soon and, uh, but, but...
Yeah, yeah, he's, he knew he was going to rent a place and get started.
Yeah.
Also, it was another paperwork for the trash. His father and, and brother came up Wednesday and removed all of the trash that was behind the, how people was going behind dumping.
Okay.
And hopefully, uh, they was going, going to put up a fence and, and clean the place up. Originally, the house was only a 20 by 20 house. The, the east, the west side, the, on the right-hand side, his father built all that new. You'd be surprised, it's a totally different place, but, you know, his wife died and he just, he just...
Yeah.
He moved to Biggs and started over, Biggs, Oklahoma, and started over. But I guess his sons, you know, they was raised there and they have fond memories of the neighborhood back in, in the eighties. It was mostly, they was the youngest couple, or most of the senior citizen, I guess, and he had desire to move back and start over. And, and that's what that street needs, because all the, all the citizens left, and the, really, the whole street is going down.
But, I, I sympathize with the emotional ties he has to this property, but we've got to have a, a solution to this in the next few days. So if you'll work with Charles on, you know, some sort of plan about what you plan to do, and I think the idea of perhaps fencing it and cleaning up the trash, all those are positive steps that we'll take into consideration, but don't let him think that this is just going to still be there 60 or 90 days from now. It's not going to be.
Okay.
If he doesn't do something in the next 30 days, then we're going to have to take action on it.
Okay. I'm, I'm pretty sure he will.
All right, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak under, any item listed under dilapidated structures? Yes, ma'am.
Mine is 1700 Northeast 35th.
Okay, and which property were you going to referring to?
Oh.
Oh, okay. It's a 1700 Northeast 35th Street. I will need your name and address for the record.
Okay, Bobby Hartfield. My physical address is 8901 North Bingham Lane Avenue.
All right, thank you. And it's, it's in Ward Seven. John?
All right, thank you. Charles, what, what's your thoughts on, on this? Continue to leave it on and work with, um, work with Ms. Hartfield?
Uh, we can do that, yes.
Okay. Let's, let's, if we can just leave it on. If, if, what's your plan for this house? Is this a rental?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if you can just work with Charles, well, we definitely going to have to have something done with it. Staff is willing to work with you on it.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you so much.
Similar situation, but you need to, don't, don't waste any time getting with our staff and working on it.
Okay.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yes, and, and we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm May Spears, and my address is, well, at my postbox, 607, uh, Nakama Park, 73066, because I never get my mail. By the time I get these letters, um, from the city about my property, well, then the time has elapsed, so that gives me very little time. So for the record, if you all would get my postbox straight where I can get my mail, because living in the country, people tear the mailboxes down.
Let, let's get some clarification there. Does she need to go to the county to, to?
Yes, she'd need to, uh, address her, address concerns at the treasurer's office.
We get your address from the county. They handle all, all the records on that. So if you'll, if you'll give them a better address, that'll help us correspond with you more quickly.
Okay, well, now, um, the property I'm here about was 11,621 Northeast 41st Street. It was a house and a shed, but I've already cleaned that up. That's all, that's all cleaned up.
Okay, well, do we have pictures of that?
Which one was again your address?
That's item Q.
Yes, we'll have...
That's how it was.
Okay.
Uh-huh. But that's all cleaned up now.
All right. Great. Is that the only property you're here to talk about?
Yes.
Okay, well, our staff will go out, and if it's cleaned up, like you say, you shouldn't have any problems from us. Charles, is there anything else you needs to know?
Uh, if it's cleaned up, we'll recheck it.
Yeah, if it's, if it's cleaned up, you're good to go. Uh, but if, if, you know, if, if Charles has any further issues, he's probably going to need a better way to correspond with you in the next 30 days. So you should probably give him a phone number or something where he can correspond with you in case there are any problems. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the long list of dilapidated structures. Are we ready to go? Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item K is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8K? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
Cast your votes and item 8K passed unanimously. Item 8L is a request for a right-of-way permit to hold H and Eighth on the final Friday of each month from May to October of this year, and Brian Bergman is here to tell us more. Brian, come on down.
Brian, you've had an early day. I saw you this morning on TV.
Yes, this is, I had two interviews this morning on TV and my morning started about 4:15. So, Brian Bergman, 500 Northwest 21st. I'm in Ward Six. I'm here to share about H and Eighth Night Markets, happening final Friday of every month on Hudson between Sixth and Ninth Street, and it also extends up Seventh Street between Walker and Hudson. And really, it's, it's kind of surprised us. You guys, probably everybody knows about it, and I won't give you the, the whole rundown, but through a little bit of discovery, we've, we've found that this is currently the largest food truck event in the nation. So there's, it, it keeps surprising us and we're working, coordinating with the city as well as coordinating with the federal because of the federal building right across the street from us. So it's, it's been fantastic, so.
All right, well, we appreciate your success and thanks for what you bring into the city. Meg, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I would make a motion. I just want to make sure with all those huge crowds, let's just keep everybody safe.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're coordinating with federal marshals. They're being, they've, they're involved as well as Oklahoma City Police Officers as well as private security. That way, we always, one of our things that we're set out to do is to always remain family-friendly. That's kind of one of our hallmarks.
Great, well, thank you so much, Brian. It's really exciting to see how it's grown. I'd move approval.
Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8M is a resolution that will clarify a labor issue for us.
Chief Jester is here this morning, I think, to explain this item. Has to do with the extension of the sick leave donation program for a departmental captain.
Good morning. On the sick leave donation issue, we've got one of our captains, Dee Patty, has a very sick child, and she's been taking care of this child, and Captain Patty has run out, run out of leave time to care for her child. And I think our request is that other officers be allowed to you to donate leave time to her so she can care for her child.
All right, this is item 8M. Okay, comments or questions here?
Your Honor, how often do you use this particular process to ask for an exception to the rule against donating sick leave?
Um, this is the first time that I know of that we've requested to do this.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. And item 8N is also a clarification on a labor issue.
This has to do with acting pay for dispatchers in, in the 911 Center, and we've recently changed our shift, shifting over there, and this is to accommodate, uh, people that fill in for acting, for acting pay.
Um, this issue has to do with 911, and at that facility, we have to have supervisors. With the way that our current schedule works, it's been changed towards it's become more efficient, but one of the slight downsides to the new schedules is that sometimes we don't have a supervisor on duty, so we do something that's called an acting supervisor, where, where one of the dispatchers acts as a supervisor for us, which is necessary. The contract allows for a person, an acting has to do two shifts in order to be paid for acting pay, and we're requesting, because it happens more often and because of the schedule change, that we be, be allowed to pay a person who's worked one shift to be allowed to be paid that acting pay.
How often is this happening, Tom? Is this every week?
Yes, I think it happens on a regular basis now since we put that new schedule in place. And as you remember from one of the prior councils, it's, it's been very, very successful, and this is one of the tweaks that we have to do to, to keep it going.
Okay. Comments or questions here?
Just, have you quantified what the cost might be?
Um, I, I have not, but I can check and get back to you.
Okay. Just curious to see what the cost might be.
I'm sure we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Voting on item eight N passed unanimously. Item eight O is a salary continuation. Understand we do not need executive session here?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Resolution passes. And item eight P, understand we do not need executive session, just a motion to pass?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight Q, we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order?
Yes.
Okay. Cast your votes. Item is struck from the agenda. Item eight R, understand we do need executive session, so I'll look for a motion to move it into executive session. Cast your votes. An item moves to executive session. Same story on item eight S, understand we do need executive session here?
Yes.
Okay. Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item eight T is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight T? All right. How about a motion to move these on then? Cast your votes. Item eight T passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right. A motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item ten is items from council. James, you have anything for us today? Ed? Larry?
Yeah, just like earlier, we had to do what Francis said. I have to do what Debbie Martin said. She gave me a note before, as the council was going on. Fire Station twenty-six, which was approved by the voters in the general obligation bond package back in two thousand and seven, opened officially for operation Thursday, last Thursday on the twenty-second. The amount of the appropriation to build this fire station was three point eight million dollars. It will bring fire service to that southwestern portion of Oklahoma City and give faster response time to that. And the official ribbon cutting will be June thirteenth at ten a.m. You all are invited to come to that also. Thank you, your honor.
Pete? All right. David? Meg? John? Pat?
Your honor, I would like to pass on a comment made by one of my constituents about the lane closings that exist in Oklahoma City right now. And there seems to be a gap between the time the lane is closed and the actual construction. We see if we can get that as short as possible.
Could you say it again?
Well, we have a gap between the time we close the lane, you know, do a project and the actual construction. And it seems like the lane is closed and closed and closed and then they start work on it. And my, the constituent was upset about the fact that it was just inconvenienced because of that.
We'd be happy to look into that. I know we'll review those regularly, but that can happen, so I would be happy to look into that.
All right. City manager reports?
I think we've got Mike Carrier here to give, there he is. Mike Carrier here is to give an update on CBB activity this quarter.
Good morning. Pleasure to be here with you again today and talk about what's happening in the world tourism here in Oklahoma City. Third quarter of this year was very strong for us. Significant number of events beginning right out of the box at the, at the first of the new year with a number of conventions in January and February that brought good business to the city. I know you all have seen some of the results as it relates to our hotel bed tax and the continued increases there. We are seeing significant increases continuing as we move through the end of the third quarter with the, the new hotels that have come online, particularly in downtown, but also out in the southwest fifteenth and Meridian area. Just an anecdotal comment to that, during the, during the first four months, actually, this is through April, we had seen thirty-five thousand new room nights available in downtown Oklahoma City and had sold twenty-two thousand of those room nights. So the, the net result is a significant increase in the number of new room nights generated downtown and citywide, over, citywide, right at forty thousand new room nights of business were sold during the first four months of this year as compared to the same time last year. So business continues to be very strong. The hotels that have opened are all enjoying reasonable success with the, with new openings. We continue to see some additional hotels under construction, you know, and so we'll see how all of that progresses. The results that we're getting back from people who have been here for events like the NCAA wrestling championships, for other activities, continue to be very positive, very strong. People enjoy coming to Oklahoma City. We enjoy having their money spent here and seeing the, the results of their activities. We're getting good comments back from folks like the NCAA, National Association of Sports Commissions and others who have said, thank you for what is being done here. We want to come back. We want to continue to bring events here and so things are going very, very well. Over the course of the next few weeks, we will have several good activities going on. Obviously, Red Earth Festival is coming up. During that time, we will have about a half a dozen travel writers in town for a fam trip. These are folks who make their living writing stories about cities and areas that they visit. We will be hosting several of those during that time period. Our social media outreach continues to be significant as we all see what's happening with the changes in how people receive their information, how they explore places that they might want to visit. Social media and electronic media continue to change the dynamics there and change, certainly change the paradigm of how we reach those folks. And so we've taken some steps that have created some significant increases in the traffic that we're enjoying on our Facebook, our Twitter and other relevant sites and the way that people receive that information. It's been interesting also to note some things that have come out in the, the industry news lately. Group business continues to be very strong nationwide. The increase in the, in the numbers, the increase in bookings continues to be very good nationwide in terms of what's happening. We're also seeing things, for instance, the, the city of Denver has just completed a study that is looking at what they need to do to improve several of their facilities. Their convention center, which they expanded just a few years ago, again, potential expansion for that. The, the Coliseum area where they have the National Western Stock Show, some major improvements to that facility and the potential increase in the National Western Show that, again, will provide us with some additional competition for some of our livestock and equine shows in, in coming years. We talk a lot about major events that come here, the large size events. There's an event that was just recently held here, sixty-third year, the National Land and Range Judging Competition. And I know a lot of people kind of wrinkle their eyebrows and, you know, what's that? Well, it's FFA kids from thirty-four states, including Hawaii, that were just here for three days. It's a long way from Hawaii to Oklahoma City to come in on a Wednesday and leave on a Friday. But we received a number of letters and thank you cards for our participation in that. One that kind of struck me personally was from a little place called Floyd, Virginia. I'm from Bristol, Tennessee, which is about as far in the northeast corner of Tennessee that, as you can go. Floyd is about a hundred and twenty-five miles northeast of there, up in the Appalachian Mountains, out kind of in the middle of, it's not in the middle of nowhere, but you can see nowhere from there is, is kind of the way we talk about it. These kids drove eleven hundred miles, Interstate eighty-one and Interstate forty to get here and wrote a very nice note about their time in Oklahoma City and thanking us for our participation. Just an example of the kind of things that go on here that don't necessarily get the, the attention that we give to, to folks like the Division One Wrestling Tournament, but certainly makes an impact on young people who are coming to Oklahoma City now and hopefully will come here for years to come and bring their kids and grandkids in future years as these types of events continue to happen. So things are very good. We are on pace in, in our targets for the year. We fully expect to meet all of our targets in terms of the number of events booked, the room nights booked. We're well ahead of pace in terms of the, the tentative bookings that we have and so we feel very good about the progress that we're making and look forward to next fiscal year as we continue to move forward with the other aspects of the industry. We are getting ready to kick off the major horse show season beginning this Thursday. The Red Bud Classic is the first of, of a long string of significant horse shows that will be here. So I would encourage you to come out to the fairgrounds just about any time between now and the fifteenth of December. And you'll see a whole lot of trailers and a whole lot of livestock and people from a whole lot of places around the country and internationally here enjoying Oklahoma City. We also have the Women's College World Series beginning this week. I have heard some great reports about the, the work that has been done at the softball stadium. Anecdotally have been told that the NCAA has already been there and taken a look and is very pleased with what they've seen. Thank you all for your continued support of that and other similar activities. And so the road to Oklahoma City for softball is not over yet, but it's close and the, the folks that are following that yellow brick road will be here within the next day or so to begin their, their conquest of us, so.
And Mike, this morning, the council approved the next phase of improvements or to, to put that out to bid for the next phase of improvements to, for the softball.
Outstanding. And I know that the NCAA will be very pleased to hear that and, you know, hopefully we're going to, we're going to hear some positive things from them in the near future about some, some other aspects of the NCAA Women's College World Series. So thank you for your continued support for tourism. It's a, it's a pleasure to be able to promote this city, to tell people about all the wonderful things that go on here. And it certainly makes our job easier when you have political leaders, civic leaders like we have here that understand the vitality and the importance of this industry and continue to support it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but thank you for your, for your continued activity.
Mike, I had a couple of comments. I was able to attend a couple of sessions from the Big Twelve Baseball Tournament. Can you kind of give us a reflection on how, how do you think the attendance was this year?
Attendance looked to be a little bit better. I have not seen final results and haven't had a chance to talk to Tim yet. I did have an opportunity while I was there to visit with the commissioner, Commissioner Bowlesby. He seemed to be very pleased with the way things were going here, obviously pleased with the way that we continue to work as a community with them to present that event. Also, you know, knowing that it's going to be in another city next year for the first time in years, but his comments were that he, he continues to look forward to having that event back here as well as others. But obviously, the rain, which, it's, it's a double-edged sword. We needed the rain and we're glad to get it. We wish that it had been at a few different hours than what it actually came, but I thought it was impressive that a lot of our fans stuck around, returned after rain delays. The Big Twelve and the Red Hawks crew, what I saw at least, worked tremendously together to make sure that the field was in the best shape that it could be in considering the weather, the weather conditions. And it, it certainly appeared that everything went very, very well. So I'm sure we'll get a, a better report within the next few days after they have the chance to do the final tallies.
The crowd on Sunday looked extremely large.
Nice crowd.
It always helps to have a local team in the, in the finals.
It certainly does.
Tulsa has secured the event for twenty fifteen.
Yes, sir.
We have the event in twenty sixteen.
Correct.
That's right. Okay.
Correct.
Ed?
Looking through this thirty-something pages, the only thing that was highlighted is you said a major challenge we experience regularly is the lack of a city-owned Parks and Rec-operated sports complex. For example, both Edmund and Mustang have quality sports complexes and are out competing Oklahoma City for tournament business. It's our hope the city will begin looking at an opportunity to include this type of facility in a future development program. What?
Well, things like Mitch Park and Edmund is a good example. There, there are a lot of cities around the country that have very active softball programs and soccer programs. Ours here are much more privately operated. We get some good cooperation from some of the private developments here, Northwest Soccer Club, the Edmund Soccer Club, the Southwest, South Oklahoma City Soccer Club, groups like that. But we lose events on a fairly regular basis to other cities that have much more vibrant city-operated Parks and Recs programs with league play than we have. College World Series is a great example. During the College World Series, there will be two additional major tournaments played here. These are youth tournaments that wind up being played here, but they're played in Edmund, in Shawnee, in Guthrie, places outside of Oklahoma City. And so that's one of, we, we put that in there because that's one of the things that perhaps, you know, in a future round of MAPS, you know, we could take a look at of having some, some publicly owned facilities that would give us the ability to host more of those types of activities. We're delighted that, that they do this in Edmund because we get most of the hotel rooms. But I sure wish it was in Oklahoma City where we would get more of the revenue, not just from the hotels, but from other aspects also. And so it's those types of things that we see that other cities are in fact doing and just kind of plant the seed that maybe in, in out years, we can continue to look at some of those things. We get excellent cooperation in the Parks and Recs Department now. It's the limits that they have. And so, you know, at some point, I think it's something we need to take a look at.
Thanks.
Mike, I know that we're looking at a new campaign. We've kind of run this cool and warm for a long time and we're looking at rolling something out. When might we expect to see your thoughts on that?
We are, we have just received information back within the last few weeks on the research that was done and to nobody's surprise, really, the, the remarks, we've, we've moved the needle some, but not as much as we would like to. And the remarks continue to be the same from potential visitors. Once they come to Oklahoma City, they leave wowed, you know, and their, their comments are, I can't believe what I saw. Well, we've got to do more and continue to try to do better to show them upfront what to expect as opposed to what many of them have the image of. So we're working on that right now. We think that within the next thirty days, that we will have something to release and, and begin using in our, in our advertising. Our ad program, I mentioned the social media a few minutes, a few minutes ago, we're probably going to go much more with electronic dissemination of information. There will still be print pieces available and there will be print advertising done. But as the, as the world moves more to electronic, to internet advertising, to social media, all of those types of things, we'll probably be doing much more in that regard than we're doing now because we now have a better definition of who our target is. That was one of the big things out of this is who's the decision maker? How do we get to them? What are some of the things we need to be doing? Was interesting talking to people. We know that we get a pretty significant crowd coming from the Dallas-Fort Worth area, but there's a whole lot more down there that, that we can get to come to Oklahoma City. And it was interesting from focus groups conducted in the Dallas-Fort Worth area to hear them talk about I-35 South to the Gulf is a parking lot. And for those weekend getaways, we get on I-35 headed south and after two hours of sitting in traffic, we turn around and go home. And so that's a great audience for us because instead of sitting in that parking lot, you can get on I-35 North and be up here in two and a half hours, maybe three, but, you know, we want you here safely. So, you know, those are the kinds of things we're looking at, you know, of, of identifying those folks and continuing to look at Kansas City and at Wichita and areas around here that are good, solid drive markets, doing a better job of telling them what we have, honing in the message and getting them to come here and spend their dollars. They're already doing it. We just know that there's more of them that we can, can work with. So that's the direction we're heading. Thank you, Meg. Other questions?
Questions for Mike?
No, but I do have a couple of comments regarding the soccer fields. We've historically funded those out of geo-bond issues. We did, that's how we did South Lakes Park and we've got, Woodson Park is under construction at this point in time. And we do have a large complex that's privately operated, but on public lands up at, up at Lake Hefner, north, or north of Lake Hefner. And so we do have several facilities. The softball side has been really done, like you said, by private groups. I mean, there's, there's, there's several complexes in the metro area that are, that are private groups, but we haven't spent public dollars to, to compete with private groups in that area because generally the need has been, has been met along those lines. Different, different markets.
And I would, I would compliment the folks at South, at the South Oklahoma City for the two thousand and seven U.S. Regionals, U.S. Soccer Regionals that we held. Last year, we worked with Northwest Oklahoma City and the Edmund Club jointly. You know, again, it's, as I, as I said, you know, it's one of those things that we just need to continue to think about because there are a lot of opportunities out there and we just need to, to continue to find ways to mine those opportunities and continue to move Oklahoma City forward. But we appreciate the facilities we have. It's kind of like other things, we'd like to see more. So, you know, at some point in time, those things we know will come around. So other questions? Thanks again for your support. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Before we get to the, to the sales and use tax report, Mike gave us a nice segue.
I'd like to introduce our new Parks Director, who began working for us this morning. Doug Cooper is here. Doug comes from Wichita, and Doug is a career Parks and Rec guy. He actually, at a young age, decided that's what he wanted to do in life and actually has a degree in Parks and Rec from Ohio State University. And, you know, Doug is, is just, his energy and his excitement about being to Oklahoma City is, I think, something that will be contagious. Councilman White had an opportunity to meet with him at a, at an event last week or the week before, and was able to spend some time, but I encourage you to all get, get to know Doug, and I think he'll be a, a great addition to our executive team. Doug, anything you'd like to share with us this morning?
Well, like the previous speaker, I made the trip down a couple of times, fell in love with your city, and with Wendell leaving, it just, it was a dream come true, actually. I've loved Oklahoma City for a number of years now. I'm just looking forward to working with all of you to make it even a better place to live.
Thanks very much. Welcome.
The sales tax, use tax reports from May were, were strong. We've talked about this previously, but one thing I do want to point out, that if you add the use tax and, and, and sales tax, general fund collections to date, it's right about $280,000 is what we've collected, and we projected about 280,000, or 200, I'm sorry, 280 million. We projected about 280,500,000. So if you take a look at that, it's 0.2% off of, off of what we projected is what we came in. That's pretty amazing. But it's even more amazing is that our economists projected that it was going to be a little sluggish until we got to the last quarter of our fiscal year, which is April, May, and June, and so far, he's been correct. Those have been the strong checks for us to date. And so it's just surprising to me, one, how accurate our, our budget office is in, in doing, doing the projections, but also our key economists, who we take guidance from, for making those projections, how well they do head. But we have had some strong months, the last couple of months, and so that, as we talked about in the past, will give us the opportunity to add some, some money back to, to the budget for some additional programs.
Also striking, I thought, when you look at the suburban cities and how they did, they had, you know, we had 8% growth. They had double-digit growth in Norman, Edmund, and Moore. So the entire metro area is doing well, but our suburban cities are, are in many ways outpacing us, so just a reminder of that sales tax erosion that occurs occasionally.
Why, why, I can't remember why the econ, why is it the final quarter? Is it coming out of the winter, or?
You know, there were a lot of factors that led into that. I think generally, it was, it was led by the energy sector and as, as how they were rebounding, what was projected to happen to the growth in the energy sector. Maybe Doug or Craig could come back in and reemphasize exactly what, what those factors were.
But that, but that's a pattern year to year, is that final quarter?
It wasn't seasonal. It was, it was.
It was, it was, it was industry-specific events that were happening out there that led him to those projections.
Okay.
All right. Citizens to Be Heard, Michael Hinton.
Doug, or Craig just walked in the room.
Okay.
Can you give us a couple of?
Yeah, and I think you're right, that part of it too was in the first part of the year, was the impact of kind of the restructuring that was going on in the energy sector that was slowing us down, and, and then also the effect of the sequestration and the effect on federal jobs and the contractors, and so then it was coming back out of that. But it is tied to wage growth, so seeing, projecting wage growth going forward.
Morning, Michael.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, Your Honor, and Council of the City of Oklahoma City. My name is Michael Hinton, 1729 Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73106. I come to share with all of you that I've been in contact with Mr. Jason Febrash, if I'm pronouncing that name correctly. He's the interim director of Embark, and I have some proposals to offer Embark Transit for further enhancement of the city's public transit system. One is that I'm hoping to bring back a steering committee, of which I had a lead role when Metro Transit was in operation under Mr. Randall Hume, the past director of Metro Transit. The formation of this committee would be of recruiting a member from each ward of the city to make assessments of the peculiarities of that ward and needs as far as public transportation is concerned. The committee would meet on findings and present them to COTPA and this council recommendations for consideration. Also, I am pleased to report that I've shared with hundreds of folks around this city and the city of Edmund, Oklahoma, regarding a substantial reduction in their insurance rates if they make use of public transportation. This is information that is virtually not publicized. The way this works is that drivers of their motorcars that use parking lot rides such as Walmart, Target, Lowe's, Mardel, or Hobby Lobby, lots, and board public transit to whatever destination they're going would get a substantial reduction in insurance rates. These reduced rates depends upon the insurance agent drivers are insured with. I've received overwhelming positive feedback from motorcar owners. Just recently, a lady told me of a 60% cut on her insurance as a result of parking her car and using public transit. Further, I'll be consulting with City Link of Edmund, Oklahoma, in hopes to get Embark and City Link to work together, in hopes maybe providing weekends service mainly for patrons of major malls, shopping centers, and sports events, namely Thunder Games. Finally, today, folks, I'd like to leave with all of your personal, and that's about me. I'm continuing to make miraculous comeback from near fatal bodily injury, which included a traumatic head injury over a year ago, which required extensive physical therapy and also speech therapy. With the power of faith and determination, I'm happy to share with all of you that I'm still serving as adjunct professor at UCO in Edmund, a coalition member for Amtrak, Heartland Flyer, and ever so happy to be in you folks' midst once again, was a restoration of the quality of life and being able to articulate on Citizens to Be Heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. All right, we can have executive session. We'll be back.
Your Honor, may I just comment on Mr. Hinton's suggestions? I think it, it's worth looking into as far as putting together a committee of citizens from the various wards to provide input on the Embark system, and I'm also pleased to hear of his recovery and look forward to his continued comments. Thank you.